Good evening colleagues. Welcome to the Meeting of the Borough Council. I am required to inform you that this meeting has been recorded and livestreamed. Welcome to those members of the public in the public gallery and those watching from home. Please bear with me a few moments while I go through some housekeeping information. If any member of the public or press would like to record the proceedings themselves, please ensure this is done from the public gallery without interfering with the business of today's meeting. If the fire alarm sounds, can those sitting in the public gallery leave through the doors behind them? And those sitting in the council chamber leave through the doors behind myself and congregate in the forecourt at the front of the town hall? Staff will assist with this. Please may I ask members, officers and members of the public to limit disturbances wherever possible. Please ensure mobile phones and other electronic devices are silent during this meeting. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. This is to ensure that everyone in the chamber can hear you. Members will note that each desk is equipped with an individual microphone. Members must switch on their microphones using the long mic button by pressing speak. Ensure that they are close to the microphone when speaking so that people can hear and speak directly into it. Members should mute their microphones to reduce feedback and background noise when they are not speaking. Can I also take this opportunity to remind members that the code of conduct applies to this meeting? And we should always demonstrate respectful and courteous behaviour towards one another. Members are also reminded that full council today will only deal with business that is set out on the summons as per the council's procedure rules. Members should indicate that if they wish to speak by physically raising their hand and being invited to do so. All other councillors must remain silent while another member is speaking. Voting will be managed by the monitoring officer and the strategy and democracy officers minuting this meeting. If any item does not appear to be contentious, members will be asked whether any member disagrees or wishes to abstain. In the situation where there is any dissenting voice, a vote will be taken. If an item requires a vote, the monitoring officer will either ask for a show of hands or will read out the names of each member in alphabetical order and ask them how they wish to vote. We will record the outcome of any voting and announce it at this meeting. I have received apologies from the following councillors. Amar, Heatherington, McCabe and McHugh. Is there any other apologies please? Yes councillor Huntley?
Councillor Potter's just had to put his apologies in at the very last minute.
Thank you councillor Huntley, councillor Ash. Thank you. And councillor Proudlock. Thank you colleagues. We now move on to item one. The first item of business is declarations of interest. I have received declarations of interest from the following councillors in advance of this meeting as the members of trade unions referred to in motion three. Declarations of interest have come in from councillor Atkinson, Best, Barclay, Carter, councillor Paul Dean, councillor Stephen Dean, councillor Donaldson, councillor Dixon, councillor Ellison, councillor Flynn, councillor Francis, myself, councillor Huntley, councillor Kilgawre, councillor East Leesk, councillor Malcolm, councillor Kay Maxwell, councillor Thompson, councillor Traynor and councillor Lamont. I've also received a declaration of interest from councillor Donaldson as a member of the standards committee. Are there any more declarations of interest? Thank you, can we go around councillor Herbert? Could you put your microphone on please? It's not working.
I would declare a personal interest in item five on the agenda as a member of the standards committee which considered a complaint referred to in the report. I am able to remain in the meeting but will not take any part in this discussion.
Thank you very much councillor Guy.
I would like to declare a personal interest in item four on today's agenda in that I am a shareholder in a wind farm which produces renewable energy guarantees certificates. As a reporter for information only, I may remain in the meeting, speak on the item and take part in any discussion and vote on it.
Thank you councillor Risto.
I'd like to declare an interest in motion three, a personal interest in that I'm a member of the United Union which is one of the unions mentioned in the motion, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Francis?
Sorry, I know you did mention me already but I've got an interest from a number of angles in motion three, a personal interest. So you mentioned in terms of Unison membership, my wife's also a member of United Union referred to in the motion. I'm also a local government employee, so that could potentially be impacted. And I'm also responsible for a local government service level budget which includes staffing costs. So just wanted to get that out in the open. But my understanding is from following advice from the council's legal team that I'm able to speak on the item, take part in the discussion and vote on it.
Thanks councillor Francis, councillor Foster.
Thank you madam mayor, first of all like you say apologies on not being able to stand tonight. In fact I might be able to stroll to sit but declaring an interest in item five as a member of the standard committees that started that day. I believe I can remain in the meeting but I'll not be answering or involved myself in any debate afterwards, thank you.
Thank you councillor Foster. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you madam mayor, just a point of information, I'm not a member, you said I was a member of one of those unions, I'm not. It's my wife who's a member.
My, thank you for the clarification on that councillor Robertson. Thank you councillor Robertson, councillor. Councillor Kennedy?
I'd like to declare a declaration of interest in motion three. My wife is a member of Unison and therefore I may wish to speak or stay in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you madam mayor, I'd like to declare a personal interest in motion three on the agenda. I'm a proud member of the GMB and my wife is a member of the Unison. I may speak on the item and take part in any discussion and vote on it.
Thank you councillor Walsh.
Yes, I need to declare a personal interest in the third motion on today's agenda. I'm a member of Unison, one of the unions referred to, and as such I might speak on the item, take part in any discussion and vote on it.
Thank you. Councillor Malcom, sorry.
I'm not sure if mine was read out on that list but we did put our forms in this afternoon. So councillor Mark Walsh is a member of Unison and myself I'm a member of the GMB. I also do some work for the NHS and Mark Walsh works full time for the ambulance service.
Thank you councillor Malcolm.
Declare a personal interest in item five on the agenda, I may remain in the meeting.
Thank you councillor Clare.
Madam mayor, could I declare an interest in motion three as a member of United although not in the government section? And also from my wife who is an army member of the GMB retired. Could I also declare an interest in item three as a member of the standards committee? Obviously colleagues need to be aware as well that a particular item is only there for notice.
Thank you councillor Clare, is there any more declarations? Councillor Gibson?
Motion three, I'm.
Sorry, just one moment councillor Gibson.
Madam mayor, I want to declare a personal interest in item three as a member of Unison. Union, thank you.
Thank you councillor Melling.
Thank you madam mayor, my apologies. I'm a member of United so I have an interest in motion three.
Thank you councillor Carter.
Thank you madam mayor, just as well as the interest I've already declared, declaring an interest I'm a member of the standards committee as well.
Councillor Jenkin?
Thank you madam mayor, I just want to make a personal declaration that I'm a member of the standards committee. And I think something was said at the beginning but I might have missed exactly what it was. I just wanted to be out there, thank you.
Is that all of the declarations of interest, have we got them all noted? With regards to which agenda item? I'm not sure that there's anything on the agenda councillor, that relates to finance tonight, okay? Well I'm sure that members are aware of that and they would declare an interest. The next item of business is item two. The minutes of the meeting of the council held on the 30th of June 2022. We now move on to item three of the agenda which is mayors announcements. I have two announcements to make this evening. I'm very sorry to have to tell you that the former councillor Shirley Stratford sadly passed away. Shirley was a Holsey Hill councillor from 1987 to 1999 and a Whitburn councillor from 1999 to 2007. Thank you colleagues. The second announcement that I would like to make this evening is with regards to South Shields. South Shields, Sandhaven Beach, over 800 beaches across the UK in an annual survey carried out by Chris Hallam's Times on Sunday to claim the top spot. We should be very proud of our foreshore and proud of the teams and the staff that work to maintain our foreshore. Not only has Sandhaven Beach been awarded the top slot as the best beach in the country, we also got the blue flag award for the beach. So the staff and all of the teams ought to be congratulated on that. Thank you colleagues. We now move on to item four. The next item of business is consider report of the director of regeneration and environment providing an annual update on sustainable South Tyneside. I will ask councillor Melling to formally move the report, councillor Melling? Could you put your microphones on?
Oh, sorry, I thought I heard. You will all have a copy of the report in your papers so I don't intend to go through it line by line. I would just like to put it into context to highlight the main points and to outline what we're doing in the borough. The Climate Change Act 2008 has committed the United Kingdom to be carbon neutral by 2050. As yet however, the government has not set specific delivery targets for councils. Tackling climate change is a moral imperative for the benefit of the planet, ourselves and future generations. To this end, South Tyneside Council declared a climate change emergency in July 2019 and pledged to become carbon neutral throughout its own organisations by 2030. The council set itself ambitious targets to achieve this. 25% reduction in emissions within three years, that's to March 2023, and 50% reduction within five years, that's to March 2025. The report informs members of our progress to date. Capital funds of 3.7 million have been invested in sustainable energy projects with a further 9 million secured from private funding. Currently, we are improving our local energy security and providing skilled jobs to the low carbon economy through our investment in local renewable energy schemes and housing retrofits. In addition, we have supported the establishment of a renewable energy centre of excellence and have worked with South Tyneside College to promote low carbon skills. We also joined in establishing the Tyne task force, bringing together MPs, councillors, businesses, the Port of Tyne and local authorities. This task force has the ambition to make the Tyne a world leader in the offshore and renewable energy sectors. The North East is acknowledged as a key hub for driving green industry forward. There are key pieces of work across the borough which highlight our commitment to climate change. Our three energy schemes, the Viking Energy Network in Jarrow, the Hebbin Mine Water Scheme and in South Shields the Holborn Scheme, the Public Sector Decarbonation Scheme, Decarbonisation Scheme, street lighting, electric vehicle charging points and the purchase of 18 electric vehicles for our own fleet, the 5.4 million pounds funding from the Green Homes Grant, tree planting and supporting a partnership project to create additional mud flats and salt marshes along the banks of the Tyne, producing a climate change toolkit for schools with one in the pipeline for businesses, developing meat free options on our school dinner menus, adding social values to our procurement contracts and major physical adaptations such as the new Redwell steps in Marsden Bay and the realignment of the coast road. We have undertaken measures to raise awareness and change cultures such as our well received climate summers week last November, a climate change e-learning module which I hope to launch shortly. We have secured places on a funded climate change public engagement training programme and the South Tyneside Business Pledge. However, there is still more to do. Working with schools and businesses, we hope to promote boroughwide a low carbon South Tyneside. We hope to educate all communities on low carbon travel, heating and food and to promote a new approach to cycling and walking. Madam mayor, I'm pleased to advise that our work to date is showing a reduction in our carbon emissions of 2,816 tonnes which is a 16% reduction against our baseline position. And we are currently on track to achieve our interim three year target of 25%. We have established a cross-party working group which will meet regularly to ensure continued progress against the climate change agenda. Climate change is an issue facing us all. We must unite, working together to bring about real change in rapid ambitious transformative actions. We must demonstrate strong leadership, mobilising communities, businesses and society to help address the impacts of climate change. I ask the council to note the information contained within this report in relation to emission reductions and delivery activities supporting the council's ambitious target of carbon neutrality by 2030. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Melling, is that seconded? Councillor Gibson?
Madam Chair, yeah, madam mayor, sorry, apologise. That's seconded and I reserve the right to speak.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report or move an amendment? Councillor Herbert?
I thank the council office for preparing this report. And I commend the work done on the energy schemes at Viking, Hebbin, Mine Water and the Holborn which use new techniques to provide greener energy for those projects. I also commend the council leaders for joining the Zero One Hundred Group of Local Authorities which pledged the council to have set ambitious net zero targets for greenhouse emissions by 2030 for council operations and 2045 for area wide emissions at the latest. The 2045 pledge should be included in this report I think. Bearing this in mind, the emissions considered in this report are rather narrow in scope only being those from the council's activities. For instance, the emissions from the council's own housing stock is not included. Also, this report should consider other sources of carbon emissions and how they can be reduced. A prime example is a local plan that will shape development in South Tyneside for decades. In this, there are plans to build thousands of houses that will produce by 2039 double the council's operational baseline emissions considered for reduction in this report. Thousands of these houses are not needed as the population of South Tyneside is actually falling. This has resulted in proposed green belt development. Green belt development is bad for the climate change because green belt is a carbon sink. A developed green belt with concrete is actually a carbon emitter. This is from increased household energy consumption in these homes. This is without considering the emissions from thousands of additional vehicle journeys created by those houses. From reading the plan, there's no requirement for greater insulation, solar panels or heat pumps. The wording in the plan is weak, saying the council will encourage or support such measures. Compare this to Reading Council that produced a local plan requiring all major housing developments to be zero carbon.
Excuse me councillor Herbert.
I don't see the relevance to the local plan to the report on our sustainable South Tyneside. Sorry. I believe we were.
Who's the member now?
Excuse me? No councillor. Councillor Atkinson raised a point of order as you've done in previous meetings, so she's allowed to speak councillor.
Point of order, I don't believe that is relevant to the report that we're considering here tonight which is the report on sustainable South Tyneside.
Excuse me, can we just stop a moment? As stated at the beginning of the meeting, when another councillor is speaking, we remain silent and we show respect and courtesy to that councillor. Please can we stop the talking within the chamber? Because it does interfere with the loop system for those members who have a hearing impairment, thank you. Carry on councillor Atkinson.
That was just the point, the point of order raised. What we're now hearing from councillor Herbert does not pertain to the climate change strategy Sustainable South Tyneside.
That's the very point, I'm saying there should be. Because there are emissions within South Tyneside, the council has signed to a pledge to reduce the council's emissions from the wider area by 2045. Now, those emissions would include both from housing proposed and.
Point of order. I don't think Sustainable South Tyneside does say emissions by 2045 across the borough. That was the UK 100 pledge.
Well, if you've made a pledge, why aren't you going to follow it? Is that just window dressing?
Point of order, that's not what we're discussing tonight madam mayor.
Right, I think we need to move on for this.
Can I finish?
Carry on councillor Herbert.
As I said, compare this to Reading Council that have produced a local plan requiring all major housing developments.
I'm sorry councillor Herbert, this item is not about the local plan. And I think that's the point that councillor Atkinson was making.
But the whole point is that the local plan as it stands now will produce extra emissions within South Tyneside.
Yes, but we're not discussing the local plan, that is the whole point.
We're discussing emissions for Sustainable South Tyneside. These houses will produce emissions in South Tyneside that will affect the overall carbon footprint.
Excuse me. Right councillor Robertson, you sat and you've whispered and you've talked to your colleagues throughout the meeting since it started. Now you're shouting out, I've pointed out twice, take this as a formal warning. Thank you, carry on councillor Herbert.
Thank you very much madam mayor. I would think it prudent that the plan be examined by the place of select committee which is tasked with scrutinising progress on the climate change strategy to see if the council is on track for this 2045 pledge. The committee should be assisted in working by the climate change working group which has a fundamental role in climate change agenda. The findings of this committee should be debated in a full council meeting as it is relevant to the health and wellbeing of all South Tyneside residents.
Thank you councillor Herbert for that, councillor Foreman?
Yeah, it's too late, he's just continued and finished his report. I'll make a point of order, the point of order is that, madam mayor, is that the local plan hasn't been agreed. So I cannot see how we talk about in any forum. It's in a consultation process at this minute in time. And until the consultation process is finished and the local plan is agreed, I cannot see the point of bringing it up in any report.
Thanks councillor Foreman, councillor Stonehouse? Councillor Stonehouse?
Thank you madam chair. I wish to discuss the matter of air pollution. Item four, climate change strategy and action plan. Air pollution is caused by many factors but by far the greatest contributor is road transport with diesel fuel being the biggest source of pollution in many towns and cities across the UK. Nitrogen oxide and tiny invisible particles from exhaust fumes, tyres and brakes are present in the air we breathe with some areas having very high levels. Across the country, poor air quality is linked to around about 40,000 early deaths a year. Evidence from the World Health Organisation shows it's particularly dangerous to the health of the very young and the very old, as we know. They said reducing pollution would boost health even in nations with relevantly clean air. A 2019 review concluded that anything below 2.5 microns of particulate matter may be damaged. may damage every organ in the body, cause heart and lung disease, diabetes, dementia and reduced intelligence. Now, the council is tied to a 25-year residential waste treatment contract, which incinerates all waste in Middlesbrough. The council, I would like to highlight the carbon dioxide emissions from our incineration of domestic waste in...
Chair, can I ask for clarification? Are we talking about South Tyneside or we're talking about Middlesbrough or the World National Organisation? Because South Tyneside, a few months ago, declared that our air quality was above national average.
Yeah.
Now, we're looking to improve that by relocating it in other areas. You're stating places outside of South Tyneside today. We're just sustainable South Tyneside, says it in the title. We're not outside South Tyneside, we're inside South Tyneside. We're talking about this document, not some story fascinated in some other quarters. South Tyneside is moving its way forward with carbon emissions, reducing carbon emissions. You've read the report, thank you.
Thank you. And I would say, councillor Gibson, that wherever the pollution is, we're talking about the waste going to Middlesbrough. Now, the thing is, we've got the, you know, we've got the transport and everything else. Either way, it's still emissions.
Thank you, councillor Stonehouse.
Can I just finish, please?
Sorry, I thought you'd finished.
No problem. So the council, as I said, is tied to this residual waste treatment in Middlesbrough. I would like to highlight the carbon dioxide emissions from our incineration of domestic use, which goes and it comes from South Tyneside. 2017, 52,598 tonnes of emissions. 2018 to 18, 54,778 tonnes of emissions. 2018, 19, 54,331 tonnes of emissions. 2019 to 20, 54,700 tonnes of emissions. And lastly, 20 to 21, 61,292 tonnes of emissions. Now, it equates to 700 to 900 kilos of carbon emissions per household per year. The council is focusing on 17,140 emissions, 1,000 emissions. But they are not taking into consideration the above, I've just mentioned, 62,000 tonnes of emissions generated by burning our waste in Middlesbrough.
Thank you, councillor Stonehouse. Councillor Herbert, you wanted to come back.
About waiting for the local plan to be finalised, well then it's set in tablets of stone and you can't change it. It's now in draft form, so you can't influence it.
No, I'm sorry, councillor, you're wrong. The local plan is in consultation with the public. There's nothing in draft, it's just a proposal at the moment. Nothing is set in stone.
I'm not saying it's set in stone, but if you allow it to be finalised, it will be set in stone. And you can't change things. Now, if you don't do these measures like solar panels, insulation, heat pumps, they will have to be retrofitted if South Tyneside becomes truly sustainable. That will be more expensive, it's cheaper to do.
Okay, councillor Herbert, I think we've progressed this enough. Thank you very much. Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in response to some of the comments that have been made to my colleagues, I just remind members here that the reason we're talking about this tonight is because three years ago, July 2019, this council passed a climate emergency declaration motion, which amongst other things said, the council resolves to lead by example by establishing South Tyneside Council as a champion for the carbon-neutral future for the borough. This will include using the council's advocacy role to influence actions all across our communities and across the region that promotes carbon reduction. So I would just say, if we're outsourcing some of our emissions to elsewhere in the region, that should be considered in accordance with the intent of the motion. Just moving on, I would welcome the report and celebrate the investment and the progress that has been made, not just in the last three years, but prior to that as well. Couple of things specifically in the report that I would like to just pick up on. It mentions in paragraph 31 that there's an E module for climate impact training to be due to be launched soon. And I would welcome that. But I would point out that in another neighbouring local authority that also passed a climate emergency declaration in 2019, the same year we did, they've already rolled that out and made it mandatory for all staff to have completed it by the end of, actually by the end of this month. So I'd be keen to get that rolled out as swiftly as possible and try and ensure that that's done at all levels of the council. So all employees underneath the council umbrella, I think, would benefit from going through that. And I especially think that the climate impact training needs to be mandatory for anyone who's in a position of making strategic decisions. Paragraph 39 mentions that COVID-19 is said to have distorted our reduction figures. So my question would be, how confident are we that we would still be on course for our target of a 25% reduction in emissions in three years if the changes arising from the pandemic hadn't happened? Obviously, in response to COVID-19, we saw overnight huge changes. And for example, just to use a parallel, homelessness and rough sleeping was almost like a flick of a switch dealt with because the will was there and it was seen to need to be done. And our working patterns and the working patterns of the local authority changed overnight too. And that obviously led to that reduction in emissions. So I think, you know, it's good to see that some of that is going to be retained as part of the modern workplace programme. But it would be interesting to know if those emissions, if those reductions hadn't been there, would we still be on target? And I would, however, point out the irony that our climate change working group met in person last week, requiring transport to and from the town hall for members, where that is one of the few groups that could easily use hybrid or online meetings and save that transport time and emissions. Finally, resolution eight from the original motion that was passed in July 2019 states that the council resolves to ensure that all council strategic decisions, policies and strategies are in line with a shift towards carbon neutral by 2030. And so my question would be, other than mandatory climate impact training for senior officers, how do we measure and monitor that to ensure that the reality matches our aspirations?
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Stonehouse, could you switch your microphone off, please? Councillor Guy?
I'm going to wing this a little bit. I was actually going to start off by applauding most of the room for this report, some of the technology that has come in.
Madam Mayor, could I just remind people, if they're all going to make a contribution to the debate, that it shows shown respect to the chair. It's always been the case, if anyone's going to stand and address the chair, then you have to stand.
It's just so I can read...
There's only councillor force to that identified at the start of the debate that he was incapable of being able to stand. That shows an element of respect. I'm asking other people to do the same.
Thank you, councillor Clever. Councillor Guy's already indicated to me he can't stand this evening. So it's fine for him to remain seated.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I suppose that leads on to my next point quite well. I was going to applaud everyone in this room for, you know, the work that's going on in this council. But I think the work is actually coming from the officers. You lot just don't get it. We're talking about 14,000 tonnes here of CO2 emissions. That's fantastic, right? But you've just been advised that 62,000 tonnes is being released into our atmosphere and you've just found loopholes to get out of here in it. Councillor Stonehouse, councillor Stonehouse told you that 40,000 people every single year was dying and not a single one of you...
Right. Just one moment, councillor Forman. This report came to the council with the delivery that has happened over the years. And I think you're right, this council does need applauding councillor Guy for the work that is done. But did you have something to say, councillor Brennan? I think, you know, we need just to take a step back at the moment. Fighting across the chamber like this, we're not going to get through this evening's agenda. So we'll let councillor Guy finish councillor Forman and then you will be able to speak. It's a point of order, councillor Forman, is that what you said? I'm sorry.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Right.
I didn't pick councillor Stonehouse up when she was talking about her 62,000 thingies of emissions because an element of it is true. But what you've got to understand is that when the waste goes to Tayside, it doesn't go in Middlesbrough either, it goes to Tayside. When it goes to Tayside, it becomes energy from waste. And your emissions become energy. And I'm sure that the Green Party and any other party wouldn't disagree with that. It's being used in the right manner these days because there's 35,000...
Can I raise a point of order on the point of order? This is not what I said.
I'm sorry.
35,000 houses are getting the benefit of this energy from waste. So I'm sure that nobody would disagree with that as an option.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Ash.
Guy, please continue.
Thank you, councillor Guy.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'll continue what I was saying. You were advised that 40,000 people were dying and not a single change of face. We had one councillor staring at the architrave when that was said. On that, about the incinerator, it's actually better for the environment if you actually just chuck oil straight into that incinerator, unfortunately. The likes of nappies, food, actually require more energy in order to actually catch fire. So incinerators is not the great way, but I appreciate where you're coming from. Where you're coming from, can I please finish? Can I please finish? Thank you. What? Yes, you keep talking over me.
Right, councillors, please, can we just have some order in the chamber? We will not have shouting across the chamber. You'll be able to speak councillor Forman and councillor Guy has finished.
Thank you again. The point is that waste is actually better to go to an incinerator over a landfill. And that is because instead of going to turn into methane, it's turned into carbon dioxide, which is less potent to the atmosphere. However, what we need to focus on is reducing our consumption in general. I came into the town hall last month, it was a lovely sunny day, but the heating was blasting. Windows were open, the lights were, the lights are in rooms with nobody in. And I think we just need to take stock that it's all great having that technology applied to our buildings. But we do need to go back to basics. If any of yous wanted to save energy around the home, what would be the first thing you would do? You'd turn your heating down, you'd turn your lights off. And I think we need to just take a bit of stock in that. That's all I wanted to say, but I do applaud... Am I out of time?
Thanks, councillor Guy. Councillor Forman?
Nothing to declare, thank you.
I'm sorry, councillor Foster.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank councillor Melling for the report. There's a lot of good news in there. And there's nothing wrong with constructive criticism, as long as it can be battled up with maybe, you know, observations about what we can do to improve. And there's only two points I'd like to raise. The stronger shores for you, for nine, that's good news. Six and a half million pounds nearly to improve the coastline and everything that goes with it. The problem we've got is, and it's not necessarily ours, there was 881,000 tonnes of untreated sewage went into the sea last year from Whitburn. So that sort of contradicts all the good work that's going to happen. Now, the company who's responsible for that is Northumberland Water. So really what I'm asking is, is I don't think that's acceptable. Who knows what it's going to be this year or next year? And I just ask that we enter into some serious conversation with them about what they're actually going to do about the amount of waste that's going into the sea. So I'd just like you to take that point on board. And secondly, it was just a comment that you passed. I happen to be a proud meat eater. Mightn't be everybody's, but in the school, you mentioned going, you know, vegetarian and vegan. Yeah, I'm all for that, I respect that. But I think as well, it should be a well-rounded diet as well. And for those parents in South Tyneside, or many, who would still like their child to have some kind of meat when they go to school, I think it's something that should be considered as well. And I say this from people I've been talking to. So overall, I think the report's good. Whoever's doing the work, councillors, officials, it's a lot of hard work gone into it. It's good, it's moving forward. There'll always be people or groups who want to do more. But my main concern is the sewage really is. And that's something that we can deal with in Northumberland Water. Thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor Foster. Councillor Huntley?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to come back to councillor Guy because he's absolutely right. We all need to switch off our heating, we need to turn off the lights. What I'm concerned about is if you've came into these buildings and you've witnessed it, have you reported that through the relevant departments to make sure that that doesn't continue?
Would you like to respond?
I thought reporting it in a full borough meeting would be satisfactory. But if there's a single person I can speak to, I will. Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, can I just come back? I am concerned because whenever that situation arose, if you've waited till Borough Council, then those days could have replicated and actually would probably made the situation worse. So I'm sure if you'd asked one of the officers in strategy, they would have gave you the right person to speak to.
Thanks, councillor Huntley. Councillor Gibson?
Madam Mayor, just reply to the councillor regarding sewage going into the sea. You're quite right. We've raised this concern on many occasions. It's been raised on a national scale. So it's getting raised with the APPG, or Parliamentary Group, who deal with coastlines. This is why we're pushing for a dedicated coastal minister so it understands the coast. But also, I've been speaking to Northumberland Water Board today and it is getting taken up, which we'll be having talks with very soon. They assured me that things were getting looked at. There's a new policy which they're actually working on. It's from 2025 to 2045. It's these issues, what you've been talking about, discharge, a lot of coastal towns, a lot of rivers being polluted, and they're all raising these concerns. So the Water Board is taking heed of it. But I'll come back to this at a later date when I have a relevant answer for you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, maybe just a quick one. I'm sitting here listening about the carbon emissions and that, and I'm being perfectly honest with you, I don't understand it at all. But the only thing I'd like to ask councillor Melling and councillor Gibson is, when are we going to see the goldfish back in the rivers? We haven't seen them yet.
Thank you, councillor Roberts. You always bring a smile to our faces. Right, colleagues. Sorry. Councillor Atkinson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to bring a few threads together, really, from what I've heard from both sides of the chamber. Cast your mind back to 2019 and actually councillor Francis did bring the original version of the climate change motion forward. I had to spend some hours on amending it to make it achievable, to make it measurable, et cetera. I mean, what was in the original motion was that this council would be carbon neutral in its operations by 2025 and all of us in the borough would be carbon neutral by 2030. So that was really a big ask. Great that we're ambitious, because we are ambitious. We've heard tonight about the achievements we've made. We've heard, you know, on both sides of the chamber, acknowledgement of that and that's good to hear. We are impatient. We have worked, not just officers, but councillors challenge, you know, challenge and challenge at every opportunity. If you're in a working group, you challenge. You challenge the fact that actually, you know, when you're going to implement that training for all officers, that's when you challenge, you're challenging committees. You don't just grandstand here to say, you know, this is what we need to do and that's what we need to do. Actually, that's, you know, we're all signed into this, let's all do it. So in summary, I think, from my opinion, it's a good report. We want better every year, we'll work to get better every year. Money is a problem in terms of buying electric vehicles, et cetera. But we are ambitious and we will not rest until we've met this target. And actually, if we can meet it sooner than what we set out, we will do. And I hope everyone can join in with that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Is the information in the relation to the emissions reductions and delivery activities supporting the council's ambitious target for carbon neutrality by 2030 noted? Thank you, colleagues. We've moved on. I'm sorry, councillor Melling, we've moved on. We now move on to item five on the agenda. To consider report of the corporate lead of legal and governance, providing an update on the standards committee held on the seventh, seventh of July twenty twenty two. This provides an update of the outcome of an investigation into the hearing of complaint C thirty eight, which took place on the seventh of July. I will ask councillor Bell to formally move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you madam mayor. On the seventh of July twenty twenty two, a hearing before the standards committee took place concerning the complaint that councillor Malcolm had breached the member's code of conduct in the way that he claimed telephone allowances. The committee heard evidence from the monitoring officer who had investigated the complaint and from councillor Malcolm. The committee determined that whilst the code had been breached in that the allowance had not been claimed correctly, the councillor had not gained anything by claiming incorrectly and in fact would have been entitled to receive a slightly higher allowance had it been claimed as it should have been. The committee issued a formal censure in respect of the breach, but did not make any recommendations that council consider imposing any additional sanctions. In light of that, the standards committee decided that the report be presented to council this evening for information only. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell, is that seconded?
Lady Mayor?
Yes councillor Robertson?
Thank you, which is in the agenda, at eight, five, point number five, to consider a report of the corporate leads. So how do, how do we consider it? Can we talk about it? Can we debate it?
I'm sorry, it's not debatable in this chamber councillor, it comes here for information only.
But says to consider, so why does it say that?
That is the legal advice I've been given. So we don't take any questions and we don't discuss it, thank you. Is that seconded? Seconded by councillor Dixon. Sorry, sorry councillor Atkinson. Is that noted colleagues? Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'm just saying madam mayor, for twenty years, they've been getting, for over twenty years, they've been claiming this, dishonestly.
I'm sorry councillor. Under procedure rule thirty four, it makes it quite clear that the councillor who speaks at a meeting will not accuse any member, officer or otherwise of improper motives or use of offensive expressions. Please consider this before you continue or I or someone else may move that you may not be further heard on this matter.
Madam mayor?
Yes councillor Robertson?
Thank you. On what councillor Roberts has just said there, you know, what he come out with and what you've responded with. At point twelve, it says, it did amount to him breaching the principles of public life.
Councillor Robertson, sit down councillor Robertson.
So where was councillor Robertson?
Councillor Robertson, sit down. Right, this is your second warning. I move that you're no further heard throughout this meeting. It is for information only. I made that perfectly clear when we started this item on the agenda, thank you. Is the report noted? Thank you colleagues, the report is noted. We now move on to item six on this evening's agenda. The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. No questions have been received under this rule. We now move on to item seven. The next item of business is to deal with petitions received under council procedure rule nine. No petitions have been received under this rule. In accordance with the council's procedure rule nine point one four, the director of governance and corporate affairs has provided an update on the action taken in respect of a petition received by council at this meeting on the twenty eighth of February twenty twenty two. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the updated report, councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you madam mayor. Colleagues, this report provides an update on the actions that has been taken in respect of the petition which was presented to full council at our meeting on the twenty eighth of February twenty twenty two. This satisfies the requirement of council procedure rule nine point one four. Madam mayor, I move the report and ask colleagues to note the content of the report for information, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon, is that seconded? Seconded by councillor Kilgaren. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Robertson, I don't think you heard me, I've moved that you will no longer be heard throughout the meeting. No, I'm sorry councillor Robertson. No, I'm sorry, you're not.
Absolute joke, absolute disgusting joke, that's what you are, honestly disgusting.
Well, I suggest then, I take it you're leaving. We all have a code of conduct to follow councillor Robertson and if you can't follow that, you do need to leave.
I can follow it. Unbelievable, you're an embarrassment. Rotten to the core. Put that in front of your double standards committee.
Thank you colleagues. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the report noted? Thank you colleagues, we now move on to item eight. The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule ten. Three motions, two now, ought to be considered. Unless the seconder wants to propose the motion. Thank you very much councillor Roberts. I will explain the procedure for motions. I will ask the proposer of each motion to move the motion and here she may speak up to five minutes. I will then ask whether the motion is seconded. The seconder may speak up to three minutes and reserve or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion, motion will then be open to debate by members who may each speak up to three minutes and may move amendments. Motion one is now deleted and it's been left because councillor Roberts has left the meeting and councillor, sorry councillor Robertson has left the meeting and councillor Roberts has said that this motion is to be left. So we move on to item, to motion two. Motion two has been submitted by councillors Best, Carter, Atkinson, Porthouse and Ellison. Councillor Best, please present the motion.
Thank you madam mayor and thank you for the opportunity to bring this motion, which I'm very pleased to do this evening. Some people may be aware and the motion is very self-explanatory in many respects, that the local government association's campaign debate not hate was presented as a result of consultation with elected members and also other people who have a stake to hold in democracy nationally. It aims to raise public awareness of the role of councillors in their communities and encourage a healthy and respectful debate and improve the responses and support for local politicians who do face abuse and intimidation. It asserts that anyone regardless of their background or political affiliation should feel safe to become a councillor and to be proud to represent their community unhindered. However, it also states that increasing levels of abuse and intimidation aimed at local politicians are, is actually preventing elected members from representing the communities they serve, from deterring individuals for standing for election and also undermining local democracy itself. I'll pause for a moment from the wording of the debate and give an example of my own personal experiences, which I thought long and hard about doing, but it's no secret because I've already announced it publicly anyway. When I thought about becoming a councillor, people tried to prevent me from doing so by various means from the outset, and I'm aware of that. Spread falsehoods, malicious rumours, made public insults and tried to smear my reputation. It clearly didn't work because here I am. Since being elected, I've had obscene messages, I've had phone calls in the middle of the night and the messages were left on my councillor telephone. I've had further personal abuse regularly in social media forums and I've even had an anonymous letter to my workplace making allegations, which was totally inappropriate. I'm pleased to say that behaviour hasn't deterred me in the slightest. In fact, it's made me even more determined to stand up and shout about this and I will do so regularly and as often as I like. Because this behaviour doesn't represent the majority of people in South Tyneside and I don't want us to represent them in that way either. And I think that we can do better. We are civic leaders. The local context, as per the wording of the motion, we are in South Tyneside renowned for our friendly, welcoming, open and honest community spirit. That should be reflected in the way we conduct ourselves as elected members and the representation should be offered to local people and the public interactions of our elected members to create a safe space for them to come along or to participate online via emails in whatever method they choose safely, including social media, without fear of ridicule, embarrassment, personal slurs, et cetera. Intimidation, you know, that, that's the purpose of this, it's to silence people's voices who want to be heard and we all have a right to be heard and we can do so freely, but not suffer intimidation, bullying or harassment. We should be leading by example. Our behaviour can be perceived if it's incorrect behaviour as a green light to people in the community to mirror that behaviour. And that then pervades into community behaviour which could lead to antisocial behaviour and how people view their civic pride of the areas that they live in. So let's take some pride in South Tyneside and behave accordingly. So I'm quite confident to stand here tonight and say that I've never insulted or been awful to anyone and I've had some interesting interactions with people who've done that when I've challenged them. We should lead by example, we have a code of conduct, we're underpinned by the northern principles in public life and we have a responsibility as elected members to stand up in public against any abusive or intimidating behaviour, especially if it's conducted, connected with our name or in support of our political groupings. If we create a safe space for democracy in South Tyneside, it's critical to openness, transparency, challenge and positive change. This isn't about silencing people to criticise or to challenge in a political sense, it's about personal insults, personal abuse and personal intimidation. If we don't do this and get that building block right in South Tyneside, then we will prevent people from engaging and coming forward to stand as councillors. So I'm asking you tonight to commit to ensuring that local democracy in South Tyneside is a safe space for public engagement, for elected members to engage and anyone else who would like to do so. And to add your voices to this debate not hate campaign. So this council I'm suggesting can resolve to promote and deliver democracy in South Tyneside as a safe space for everyone, for the public to engage with all elected members acting as ambassadors, proactive ambassadors for safe and respectful democratic engagement. And I would like to suggest that we are able to sign the public statement which underpins the LGA's debate not hate campaign, which is listed in the wording of the motion. And one other aspect that might not always be obvious to people, but at the very end of the list of people who've already signed this statement is a person who I respect hugely and who I've had the pleasure of working with directly, Mr John Austin, the Chair of the Association of Democratic Services Officers. Because we also need to remember that our conduct in places like this affects those officers who have to work in the environment and I for one, don't think that's fair to put people through that. So Chair, I would ask for the support of the chamber tonight in passing this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Best. The motion seconded councillor Carter? Councillor Carter's seconded the motion. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask questions, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Milburn?
Thank you madam mayor. I must be one of the three out of the ten councillors. I haven't experienced anything that you've described there. Yeah, I think it's a good thing, but however, I'm, I'm quite interested to, I wonder how much of that is actually social media and how much is face to face. I would suggest the majority is social media. From what I can see. But you disagree and I see you shaking your head.
I'm sorry that.
Okay, sorry, you know, all I would say as well, you know, if it is, if it is in social media, I would just leave it alone because the more, the more you respond, the more oxygen you give to the, to the aggressor, the worse it becomes and, you know, but I agree with your, your motion, thanks very much.
Thank you councillor Milburn. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you madam mayor. I'm sure every one of us in the chair today will support the essence of this motion. I've seen the abuse, the intimidation, the pain and the distress caused. And this isn't only suffered by councillors, but by candidates in elections, supporters of councillors and candidates and even their friends and family. So it's important to remember that any safe space shouldn't be solely for councillors. I think it's important to speak on one area not mentioned in the LGA's campaign literature. But here in South Tyneside, it's at the root of the problem we have. It's in relation to freedom of speech and acting and speaking in a civil manner. The LGA do mention that debating and disagreeing with one another is a healthy part of democracy. In other words, political challenge is good. I believe that and that's how I act civilly and within the parameters of political challenge. What we have to be careful about here as councillors and what the LGA don't mention is understanding the difference between political challenge and abuse. If we are challenged robustly, which is stated by the LGA as a healthy part of democracy, this is not abuse. But calling political challenge abusive is in fact just another form of abuse. All too often, I see worrying signs of this here in the chamber, on social media and all too often from the Labour Group. Labour councillors using words like uncomfortable when describing what opposition councillors have said. This is dangerous territory. Labour councillors using fake profiles on social media, again, dangerous.
I'm sorry councillor, thank you algevode.
In what manner am I algevoda? This is my experience and what I've seen and I'm speaking to the chamber on that.
You are speaking to the chamber, but excuse me councillor, don't talk over me. Right, give you a warning councillor. Nobody speaks over the mayor when the mayor is speaking. You adhere to the code of conduct. If you can't do that, you will be no longer heard.
I am adhering to the code of.
You are not.
I'm giving my experience in exactly the same manner that the person.
Right councillor, it's your second warning, you will be no longer heard. Thank you, can we move on? Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Brennan?
Thank you madam mayor. Whilst I do welcome anything that will facilitate debate in democracy and encourage a healthy form of politics, it has to be mentioned that there's more than a tinge of hypocrisy from the Labour Group here. Only recently, a Labour Group councillor referred to the public gallery as your opposition's councillor's personal fan club. If we're going to encourage healthy debate, any safe space needs to be inclusive and open to everyone, including our residents. So yes, to a safe space, but that safe space needs to be for everyone. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Brennan, councillor Roberts?
Thank you madam mayor. Madam mayor, I've got two little problems, points to bring up because as councillor Best said, I have been attacked on social media and all, you know, I was attacked before I became a councillor, I was a candidate. But the first thing madam mayor is, I think when I talk about hate, coming from a Labour councillor, I think that's quite amusing. Because as we've seen on social media and we've seen the court case not so long ago, that two Labour councillors knew all about fake profiles and one of the Labour councillor's daughter admitted to having a fake account.
Just one moment.
Had that fake account madam mayor.
I'm sorry councillor Roberts, right. If you've read the report, which you all have read the report because you've. If you've read the report, which you all have read the report because you've had the summons, well in advance to see the content of the report. Lots of us sitting in this chamber from different political parties have suffered abuse, not just on social media. I myself, when I first became a councillor, suffered horrendous abuse. So we understand it's about making people safe. It's about making all councillors from all political parties safe, but it's also about making the general public safe. And that's what the report stipulates. It's not, it's not about getting at one political party against another. It's a hate, the hate campaign is to make people safe, which is all of us collectively as a council. And that's what councillor Best was trying to point out. No, I'm sorry councillor, we've ended the discussion.
Madam Mayor, can I just ask you why you're protecting these councillors in here?
Councillor Roberts?
You are protecting these the same as what officers do.
I'm sorry councillor, you are well out of order. I give every. I beg your pardon. Excuse me, I chair this meeting and I do it fairly. I give every member in this chamber regardless, no, because you started going on about. It's, it is. Right, can I just, can I just point out to you councillor? Under procedure rule 34, which I'm sure you made aware of, a councillor who speaks at any meeting will not accuse any, anyone, member or officer or otherwise, even proper motives or use of offensive expression. Please consider this before you continue or I or someone else may move that you are not further heard, which I've just done with councillor Thompson. Because councillor Thompson, I'm not. Councillor, right councillor, you've had two warnings. I'm now asking you to leave this chamber. I will point out again for the benefit of the members sitting in the Public Gallery and for the members watching at home. Every elected member in this chamber has a code of conduct to follow. That has not been followed tonight on two occasions. That's why two members have left the chamber. We will move on. Sorry councillor Kilgawa, you had a point of order.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Don't wish to prolong this any longer than is absolutely necessary, but the information provided by councillor Roberts is untrue and inaccurate.
Right councillor, that is noted. Thank you. Councillor Best? Yes councillor Roberts? I'm sorry, that's not. Right councillor. Councillor Roberts? No, I'm not going to tell you to go councillor Roberts, you're quite welcome to stay. But what I will say is it's not on the summons for this evening's meeting. So we don't discuss any legalities outside of this meeting because we would be breaching our code of conduct. Councillor Best, would you like to reply? Sorry councillor Finn, I didn't see your hand up.
Yeah Chair, I want to return to the move as comments councillor Best. Councillor Best is the second female councillor that I've heard say they get phone calls at three o'clock in the morning. Now, that isn't acceptable, whichever political party that member's of. And I'd like, I'd like after tonight, the leadership and the legal officers to consider what protection we can give to these individuals.
Thank you councillor Finn. Councillor Martin, did you speak now? Councillor Best, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tried to jot down a few things in response, so thank you for the opportunity to do that. Firstly councillor Milburn, thank you for your comments and your support. Just to clarify, my experiences are certainly not just isolated to social media, as I've explained, phone calls, obscene messages, also personal, you know, one-to-one comments and basically people saying things to other people in an, you know, in a one-to-one context as well, as well as social media. But yes, there is a lot on social media too. In terms of councillor Thompson, who I know he has left the chamber, but I'm still going to make the comment anyway.
Continue councillor Best.
Thank you Chair.
I excuse. I'm not protecting anybody. I'm trying to conduct a civil meeting. For the benefit, benefit of the members in the Public Gallery and those watching from home, I will conduct this meeting legally as I am advised. Thank you councillor Best.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In respect of the comments that were made, I would like to point out to everyone, including the people at home, that if people listen to what I actually said, this is a non-partisan motion. At no point did I say who, who conducted these actions against me. I have not said that at all. I want this whole chamber to unite against this motion and I think, you know, lots of lessons learned tonight certainly, we would be the better for it, for everybody who wants to participate in democracy in South Tyneside. I could stand here and give you a list of the people who've done these things, but I won't because that would be unprofessional. And in terms of councillor Brennan, I don't even know where to start with the tinge of hypocrisy. I'm just going to actually park that and I'm sure people can do that own research on that little matter. So please get behind the motion. We all need it clearly from some of the actions that have been conducted here this evening in the chamber. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you colleagues for your support.
Thank you councillor Best. Is the motion agreed? Thank you colleagues. Motion three has been submitted by councillors Kilgawa, Purvis, Huntley, Potts and Welsh. Councillor Kilgawa, please present the motion to full council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's actually a privilege to be able to present this motion as a proud Unison member. And I won't read the entire motion, Madam Mayor, because it is set out in the papers. I will read the first paragraph and a little toward the end. So local government has endured central government funding cuts of more than 50% since 2010. Between 2010 and 2020, councils lost 60p out of every one pound they have received from central government. Unison researchers found that councils in England had to fill a combined funding gap of £3 billion when setting budgets for 2223. I may add, Madam Mayor, that this, although this motion does relate to council staff and also school workers, it isn't in isolation and I do personally recognise as two members in this chamber, I'm sure, other members of our community who work receiving low pay or insufficient pay for the work that they carry out. So, Madam Mayor, the.
Councillor Kilgawa, will you continue please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Madam Mayor, I was, when, when this motion went into the papers for council, I was contacted by a Green Member of our opposition members and discussed with councillor Frances this particular motion and some concerns that he had around it. I'm pleased to say that in contacting Unison nationally, that I was able to be furnished with some further information. So the Joint Negotiating Committee, who deal with chief officers of local authorities, works separately with regards to the funding strategies and pay increases, et cetera. Now, it's my understanding that Unison are running in tandem with this, this venture and this motion to government, another relating to chief officers, who include, the term chief officer refers to council officials who are the director or head of service or appointed deputies to the director or head of service. So there is a separate body, Madam Mayor, dealing with, with those increases or the suggested increases in pay for fair balance. There's also the parapetetic services, et cetera, who I feel that may consider themselves as being squeezed out by way of government funding and that the rises don't actually apply to them and the services that they fund will be needing to be topped up in order to meet the, the demand of a pay increase of their members as well. I'm told by Unison that that hopefully will be worked out in the mix and, and just to be very, very clear, that this is not an ask of our local authority to fund this. This is a direct ask of the government to make this funding request. Local authorities have absolutely been, you know, their budgets have been slashed, you know, historically under this government, if I may get political, and therefore we find ourselves in this situation. So Madam Mayor, just to ask that council resolves to support the pay claims submitted by Unison, GMB and Unite on behalf of council and school workers for an increase of £2,000 or the current RPI rate, whichever is the greater, and I know Madam Mayor currently it's 11.1, along with the various conditions claims proposed. We can only do this via direct government funding and this support is to lobby government for this. Call on the Local Government Association to make urgent representations to central government to fund the NJC pay claim, which is unaffordable at local authority level. And NGC is, NJC is the National Joint Council, otherwise known as the Green Book. Write to the Chancellor and Secretary of State to call for a pay increase for local government workers to be funded with new money from central government. Meet with local NJC union representatives to convey support for the pay claim and consider practical ways in which the council can support this campaign and encourage all local government workers to join and to seek support of a union, although this will be very much a personal decision and there's no direct ask of them, it's just a consideration for the community of our workers. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kilgawa. Is the motion seconded?
Formally seconded, reserve the right to speak at a later date.
Thank you councillor Purvis. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask questions, speak or move an amendment? Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for the record, as a lone conservative, I do support the motion. I see nothing wrong at all in any union representing the members to the maximum to see if they can get what they think is a reasonable award. But as most things, take it to the government and then, you know, consult and compromise, which is always my stock scene. I'd just like to make a couple of observations in the report. I know austerity is a thing that hurt we're all, but, you know, without getting involved in here tonight, there is a solid political argument why there was austerity. Some agree with it, some don't, but that's why maybe we represent different parties. But either way, I don't think anybody is stupid, there's a, there's a specific argument for an austerity, it doesn't mean to say you have to agree with it. I think you've got to take into account inflation as well. Yes, it's high, yes, obviously it's automatic, people want to match inflation, but really global events have taken over to a certain extent. I think that's something that needs to be considered when, when they do discuss, you know, whatever rise is going to be reasonable and fair. But I think it's just an observation that, you know, yes, you know, the government can be criticised, but at the end of the day, it's a global problem. Inflation is across, certainly the continent, across the world really. There's a term which I'm not going to pick up on, but, you know, cut to the bones a bit sort of, you know, yes, it's been tight, but I mean, that's neither here nor there. That's how councillor Kilgawa feels, that's her prerogative. But there has been severe cuts, except that, but it's saying there's sound political reasons why. And just the other, for this, obviously 900,000 job losses, which is sad in anybody's eyes. Yes, some of them may well accept, may well be because of the cuts, but I wouldn't be surprised if some of them, I don't have the figures, is because of technology. You see it every day on the television, factories, companies enter, you know, because of technology, they don't need the workforce to support it. So maybe that's another factor, but I'll not disagree with the fact that some jobs will have been lost because of the cuts. So yes, I will support the motion. I don't see any reason why unions, I agree with unions, an important part of life, you know, they represent the members to the full. Hopefully they'll have successful negotiations with the government, come to a compromise, they'll get a fair award and at the end of the day, it doesn't result in any strike action, anything that's going into it. But in principle, I agree with the motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Foster. Councillor Frances?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to thank councillor Kilgawa for, for bringing this motion forward tonight and, because I think she knows, we were kind of both have been working on it concurrently and obviously you got there first, so I'm more than happy to support it. And just to kind of clarify, I was aware of a couple of potential unintended consequences that I thought might benefit some people who maybe didn't need the additional money and might also put some people at the lower, lower end of the pay scale at risk. So I'm pleased to hear that those assurances have been sought and I'm happy to support the, the motion tonight.
Thank you councillor Frances. Councillor Kilgawa, do you wish to reply to the debate?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, other than to say thank you for the support.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the second I wanted to reply as well. Councillor Purvis? Councillor Purvis, you can remain seated if you wish.
Yeah, it's okay. I just couldn't let the solid argument for austerity go past because I think there was this austerity applied to people like me. I saw on television bankers and financiers when their bonuses were announced popping corks of champagne and certainly austerity wasn't in their lexicon. So yeah, there was austerity, but it was the, you know, the working classes, not those at the top. So I don't know where the solid argument was, but it certainly wasn't applying to them lads and lasses when their bonuses were announced.
Thank you for that councillor Purvis. Is the motion agreed? Thank you colleagues. Colleagues, that concludes the business of the council today. May I thank those members sitting in the Public Gallery for attendance and all of those watching from home. Enjoy the summer recess, we will return in September. Thank you so much.